Want to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Community Unit School District 186 Board. And Nancy Wood, please call the row.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Corley?
Here.
Mrs. Dor?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mrs. James?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Rundy?
Here. Item number three is Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Grody, would you lead us tonight?
Sure. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Grody, are there any changes?
There are not, sir.
And I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated 11/21/17, District 186 Tax Levy Hearing Minutes dated 11/21/17, Tri-County Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated 11/8/17, Tri-County Bills for December of 2017, applications and reports. I will entertain a motion to approve. In a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six is the approval of District 186 Bills for December 2017. Are there any questions from the board?
We have a couple on the same page, so...
Please let us know the page number.
Page seven, with the timestamp of 11:19 a.m. on the bottom right corner. So I'm wondering, we paid a small fee for Project Wisdom. I'm just wondering what that is.
That's a middle school online subscription.
And what's it do? I guess I should ask that.
Mr. Keener here for this one.
He's at a ball game.
Project Wisdom for the middle school. Did either of you know Project Wisdom?
Wisdom.
Project Wisdom, it's an online subscription the middle school is going to use.
I think that's used in the AE room, but I'm not sure. I think it's a character ed.
It's a fairly new thing that Mr. Keener requested.
Oh, that's the thing we do in the morning. It's something that every morning they have a story or a quote from a famous person they read. It's inspirational and positive, and they choose different students who stay to read them over the morning.
It's kind of a character, character ed.
Character ed.
Thank you.
And then down below that, the security alarm or the cell dialer, is that like the all-call system?
No, it's, um, it has to do, Steve and Ripley aren't here, so it has to do with, the maintenance, the call system that lets us know our fire alarm system dialer.
Okay.
Did I hit Mr. Stone?
Mm-hmm.
I can get you more details on that, a better description of that.
All right, I'll talk to Steve.
Yeah.
Darren might be the best person. We had a project ordered for it, for the repair.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board?
Um, the GJL additional repeater, was that?
What page number?
That same page.
That's the internal walkie-talkies. Our walkie-talkies inside of that building wouldn't work.
Don't work without that.
And so the repeater on the inside got us to use that, and there was hit or miss us getting to the,
Playground.
To the playground area, yeah.
We have a repeater at the high school as well.
With the additions of those people moving into the youth center, we wanted to make sure we had that fixed.
Anyone else? All right, then I would entertain a motion to accept the bills.
I'll make a motion.
In a second?
Second.
Nancy, what you have?
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dor?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Mr. Rundy?
Yes. Motion carries. Communications?
I have two.
Okay.
To whom it may concern, I am writing to formally inform you that I Paul Carson am resigning from my position as Assistant Lead Cook of District 186. Thank you for your time, and if you have any questions regarding my letter of resignation, please feel free to call me. Sincerely, Paul.
Administration wishes her well and recommends the acceptance of her resignation.
Was that effective immediately?
No, February 27th. She came in and talked to Jan about it and gave her a verbal. And I got the letter yesterday.
So we have a recommendation from the administration to accept the resignation letter. Will we entertain a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have a second, would you say?
Mm-hmm. To whom it may concern, in accordance with the contract between Murphysboro Education Association and the Murphysboro Board of Education, I am submitting my plan to retire at the end of the 2021 school year. Sincerely, Mary Patterson.
We recommend the acceptance of Ms. Patterson's retirement at the end of the 2021 year?
We have a recommendation from administration to accept the retirement letter. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We wish her well. Is it?
Mm-hmm.
Item seven is communication, I'm sorry. Item eight is fishbowl items, and I think we have several. Who wants to start? Let's start with you, Mr. Corley.
Several pictures along with this one. Murphysboro CUSD 186 School Board, on Thursday, December 14th, 2017, General Johnny Logan took 65 students on the Polar Express. These 65 students earned this trip with their good behavior. They have each had zero behavior points the entire first half of the year. With such an amazing accomplishment, we wanted to do something special for them. Around 2:30 p.m. Thursday, the train whistle ran through the halls announcing all aboard the Polar Express. We loaded the bus and headed to the Antrap Station. Our wait at the station was a bit longer than expected, but our students proved to us exactly why they were there. We had so many compliments from other passengers on how well behaved and patient they were. When we finally boarded the train, the excitement on their faces was overwhelming. Once seated, each student received a cookie and a milk. While they were eating, silence fell over the train car with whispers of, "Did you hear that?" The sound of bells seemed to be in the air. Then all of a sudden, there was a loud "Ho, ho, ho." Sam made his appearance and greeted each child with a Merry Christmas greeting and a Christmas bell. It was truly a wonderful trip. A special thank you to Christie Miller and Rick Rundy for spending the evening with us and entertaining our students during their wait. Thank you for all your support. We hope to continue doing exciting things for our students. Sincerely, Ashley Rundy. I could have been a little bit more animated with...
I don't know that we want to see the pictures, but you might as well pass them on. To all involved, that was, and I know Melinda Pearson, you had a great deal to do with that phenomenal job.
Well, thank you guys for coming. Sincerely, it was really nice to have you guys there, and it wasn't but not.
I'm going to sign up already for next week, so put me down. It was a great time. All right, who's next? Mrs. Dor?
Um, let's see. Congratulations to the class of 2018 Illinois State Scholars, Murphysboro High School. Melissa Brady, Brandon Caldwell, Ryan Chambers, Daniel Collins, Matthew Grody, Abigail Hedrick, Jackson, is it Knope? Um, William Phoenix, Patrick Stokes, Daisy Watkins. Uh, the state Scholar Bowl program recognizes students attending approved high schools, typically Illinois public high schools, for outstanding academic achievement. State scholar designation provides honorary recognition with no monetary award. Approximately the top 10% of graduates from approved high schools are announced as state scholars each year. That's from Katie Hickon.
I have, I guess what I would call an athletic update, athletic good news. Another Red Devil student athlete will continue his education through athletics. Devondre Gaston is going to be running in track at Greenville. Eight student athletes have been recognized by Southern Illinois Coaches Association as being named All South. In golf, it's both Hannah Gahagan and Casey Rendelman. In volleyball, it's Drew Stokes, Lily Shaldemos, and Mallory Harris. In boys soccer, it's Leith Alame, Alan Lay, and Aaron Garrett. And in football, it's Mo Valant, Valiant. In addition, Red Devil volleyball head coach Mike Lane was named Volleyball Coach of the Year, and this is the third straight year he's won that honor and sixth time in his career. Also in volleyball, Drew Stokes was named the 1718 Volleyball Player of the Year, and this is the fifth time since 1993 that a Red Devil has earned that title. Congratulations to boys basketball coach Daryl Murphy and his assistants, Ben Dogan, Matt Decker, John Marston, and Jason Jarrett, for winning the 15th Annual Ernie Bozart Tournament. This is the fourth consecutive year and the 10th overall. Devils won five straight games, had three members on the alterni team, including Jaron Gaston, Damari Greenwood, and Jeremy House. He was named the MVP. Varsity Boys is undefeated as they head to the Carbondale Holiday Tournament. Also, congrats to wrestling coach Shay Baker and his assistants, Drew Hopkins, Bill Deets, Ted Baker, and Dan Baker. They are 3-0 in the conference race. They've earned at least a share of the conference title and can win outright with a win over Baylor in January. This is the fourth year in a row that they've won or shared the conference title. And finally, congrats to the MHS Choices Devil Dogs Basketball Coaches, Amy Stewart, Lisa Melvin, and Pete Baird, cheerleaders and the team on their first win of the season on December 4th over the Brownsville Beagles by a score of 28 to 22.
Good. Congratulations to all of those updates as well. Mr. Green?
This is from librarian, this is Janet Terry at General Johnny. Dear members of the board, General Johnny Logan attended Center Hill's annual Fall Classic Book Fair in October. Prior to the start of the fair, I was contacted by a kindergarten student's aunt, Amy Hendricks. She wanted to make a donation so each child was able to have a book. She expressed how literature impacted her life and wanted to promote the love of reading to young readers. Couple of days before the book fair, I was given a $3,000 donation. Having been a chairperson for many book fairs, this brought tears to my eyes. I've never had a donation of any kind, let alone one of this size. Amy Hendricks and Dr. Gurpreet Pada were our donors. Amy grew up in Murphysboro. She currently lives in St. Louis and works for Dr. Pada. Their kindness and generosity was greatly appreciated, watching each of our students come through the fair with a huge smile. The students took their time to select the perfect book. I know Amy's hopes to inspire the love of reading were fulfilled. I just wanted to share this wonderful gift information with you. Mrs. Ayler says, "Dear Mr. Grody and the Board of Education, I would like to congratulate Kelsey Rohr, who was awarded a $500 grant from Egyptian Electric for her classroom. She was able to purchase a listening center, materials for her literacy stations, books, CDs, as well as math and reading games for her students. All these materials will enrich her classroom instruction and be much more engaging for her students with the additional hands-on materials. We'd like to thank Brooke Guthman and Egyptian Electric for their generosity in providing such an opportunity for our teachers and students."
Green?
I have a couple. First one is from Steve Carrington. The district, along with Project Pixel Press, presented the Big Muddy Monster Game Jam on Saturday, December 16. We had more than 80 students in attendance representing all schools in the district. The students learned basics of video game theory, storyboarding, design creation, and they were able to play the games they had created. Several individuals stepped up to make this event possible. Josh Stevens, Robyn Rath, and Josh Jacobs from Project Pixel Press were on-site and provided direction and support for the day. These three men are graduates from Murphysboro High School and continue to represent as well. District employees Heather Parr, Kim Cook, Gail Scott, and Kevin Haldeman volunteered their time to help in the most any way possible. From ensuring the technology needed ran smoothly and all students were properly supervised to serving lunch. Several students also stayed the day and provided support as needed, from registration to lunch cleanup. Financial support is always needed for free events like this, when the Murphysboro Education Foundation and State Farm Agent Stan Grave provided the cash resources necessary. Silkworm and Whiffle Boys Pizza gave significant discounts for products and services, and the school district provided a space and custodian. Chris Imhoff, who worked hard to ensure we had everything needed. Thanks for allowing activities like this to happen in our district. Respectfully, Steve Carrington. My next one's from Lynn Navara. Special thanks to MHS Principal Tony Wilson for going out of his way to bring Nashville, Tennessee, and Warner recording country artist Drew Baldrige to Murphysboro High School. Mr. Baldrige stopped by to visit with the MHS Course Department on December 7. The MHS dancers and singers performed one of Drew's songs for him, and it really seemed to be special for Drew. Drew performed several songs, spoke to the kids about following their dreams, and had a question-answer session, of which the students asked some very good questions. The entire session was covered by WSIL TV3, a date the students will never forget. Special thanks not only to Drew Baldrige, but specifically to Tony Wilson and Jessica White for making this event happen.
I have a Crowther's update. On November 27th, Mrs. Suits was one of eight teachers to receive a $500 grant from the Egyptian Electric Cooperative Classroom Grant for her Reading for Success Program. On December 6th, Carolyn Guthman and Janine McCarron were selected for the Illinois Music Education Association All-State Elementary Chorus, and they'll represent Crowthers in the district in Peoria this January. The 3rd grade had their winter concert on December 7. Mrs. Asa and Mr. Todd applied for and received the Whole Kids Foundation and the B Cause Project Grant. Because of their efforts, Crowther School received an indoor observation hive. On December 19th, the Beginning Band, which is today, gave their first public performance to the faculty, staff, and students. And Crowther School collected and donated a large amount of food to the Murphysboro Food Pantry.
Very good. Lot of good items in there.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
I just want to say, in the wake of the tragedy last week, I just want to give thanks to the administration, the staff, to our social workers. The way you guys stepped up was amazing. The candlelight visual last night was great, so thanks to the parents who did that. Um, Mr. Wilson handled last night very well, and thanks to Jeff Keener, I know that he supplied some food when all the counseling was going on the next day, so I just want to recognize how well they handled the horrible situation.
Thank you for that. Okay, item number nine is the Freedom of Information Act request. Did we have any?
We did have one. It came in this week. Isaac Smith from the Southern requested information from a former employee. We responded that we do not share disciplinary information, so we responded in a timely manner.
Perfect. Next item of business is recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action by the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting, and I'm going to assume that we have several. First, we'll start with public, and please, as you come forward to speak, please state your name because this is being recorded.
I am Bert Osber. Our concern, my concern, is with these parents. We have an appointment this Thursday with the Board of Education to discuss a matter of, of kids drinking alcohol on November 17. We understand that the board wishes to meet with each individual parent. We're requesting that in lieu of individual meetings, we would like for the parent group to meet in its entirety with the Board of Education. We feel that, the parents feel that they can better present their appeal. We feel that the Board of Education will better understand the basis of their appeal, and that's our concern.
Okay. Thanks, Bert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Anyone else? No one? How about employee concerns? Melinda?
I just have, it's not even a concern. Something I didn't get into fishbowl. I just wanted to let you all know, since I came and presented last week, or last month, about our angel tree. We are just about done. We're almost, we're in the homestretch for Christmas, and the four social workers across the four buildings helped provide Christmas gifts for 320 district children, as well as children not yet in district, preschool age and younger kids. About 100 families within our district were helped, and in my school alone, we have 37 families, 120 children, and 25 of those were on our angel tree. And the reason I really wanted to recognize was that 20 of the kids helped at my school alone were provided for by our district employees. And I really want to recognize Mr. Wilson. He saw a personal Facebook page of mine wanting angel tree donations. He encouraged his MHS staff to help, and literally within minutes, the history club, the junior/senior class, the fellowship Christian athletes, all, and a host of teachers had taken 11 of my kids, like within 10 minutes. Karen Dor, Rick Rundy, you may not know this, Mr. Rundy, but you, between the two of you, you provided for seven children. Well, I knew your wife and daughter were the ones that actually did the shopping. Between the two of you, you guys provided for seven children, and Jenna Green's wife organized an angel tree at St. Joseph's that helped about 40 of our children, 25 at my building alone. We received such an outpouring of support from board members, from employees, from members of the community, that by the time Christie Miller asked me for a child off our tree, we were all out. So we also got $3,000 from an organization called We Care down in Jacob that was just for the purpose of buying Christmas gifts, which really took care of almost all of our needs that weren't already taken by an angel tree. So I just wanted to recognize that our community really, really helped these kids in a variety of different ways, including you all, so thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for the organizing, all of that.
Mr. Chairman, I have one.
But sure, I will, hang on, just one second, Bert. I just want to thank you for organizing it all. I don't know how you kept it all organized, because I walked through a couple of your rooms before the Polar Express, and it was amazing that, I don't know, there was stuff everywhere, but it's branded...
That's exactly how it felt, but thank you very much.
Okay, Bert, sure.
Could I take just a minute to hand out these, I'd like to hand out to each board member so that they can go over it?
Is this, is this the letter that was, that was sent in?
No.
Okay.
No. Are you done? Mr. Grody, would you like one? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Any other employee concerns? Or praises? All right. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it. Time to move into old business. Item number one under old business is the district financial update. This is informational.
This is to be, as we've said, on the, on the agenda every month, and there's been literally no change. Not even an email saying, I mean, in November, October, they kept telling us next month we'd get the information. There was literally not even an email on this one. So as far as the finance update goes, we still don't know what the evidence-based model will get us, and Jan and I were discussing earlier that it might be possible that there's just not the revenue for them to even have to split it up, so they might have to figure it out if there's no extra revenue, but, state is still very mute on the financial outcome of the evidence-based model. It's a good formula, just don't know if they can fund it, so.
Wonderful. Okay. Any questions from the board?
I can't, this is an update on the 5th grade during that, that was old business. Do you have numbers still?
I don't have numbers with me, but they are pushing over 30 with your, with your special ed classes going in. They're definitely the largest.
The numbers are the same?
Yeah, they're exactly the same. We don't really have a room. We have to move some special ed kids around. This summer, we're going to have to do some construction and take some of the big rooms. Mrs. Brown and Ms. Mahoney actually have a creative idea for one of those rooms, which she's going to be bringing to Curriculum Council for that, but next year, we're really going to have to look at, we need more teachers.
Yeah, we have a new student in 5th grade coming tomorrow.
Yeah.
Tomorrow.
So given the funds or not, we might just have to figure out how to do it, because we do need more classes, but we're going to have to build rooms this summer.
And you don't know, like, an estimate of cost for that yet?
The walls, because they used to be there, really wouldn't be that expensive. I mean, it's just putting up some-
Drywall.
Drywall and stuff, yeah.
So Ms. Brown, is your idea for something of next year, or are we talking about an answer for the immediate?
No, for next year.
Next year.
No, it would be for next year.
Next year, okay. And you're going to bring it to Curriculum Council in January, right?
Yes.
So.
Any other questions? All right, second item under old business is a construction update, and this is also informational. Mr. Grody?
They're still moving along. We've not been able to get a facility subcommittee meeting scheduled. Couple of weeks ago, Randy, who was the architect working with HR, quit. Walked in, gave his letter of resignation, and he went to another architectural firm, so I believe we're going to have Tim Downing, is who they're signing to us now. We've worked with him before. So I'm going to schedule a meeting before the next board meeting. We'll have the architects here to talk about the construction update in January. But really, February is when the walls get delivered. I will tell you this, that the coordination of when the walls get delivered, these are 40-foot precast concrete walls. Tony's already organized where parking's going to change. We're going to have teachers out there on the, because we're going to have to open up that whole side, so I believe he's got some teachers moving and the students moving so that there'll be a clear way there, and then all the classrooms that are close to that area are going to move to the other side of the building. And Fager McGee has hired a berm that-
To where?
Over to the library and to some other classrooms where the teachers are on a plan. So they're going to have another place, because a 40-foot thing, if it should happen to fall, we don't want any kids in those areas. However, Fager McGee did subcontract with a company that does nothing but put up precast walls. They figured that the time savings with a company that just does this for a living will be a saving, so those were the updates at the last construction meeting. The sign has been changed and the wall has been painted. We're still waiting for the banner that's going to get hung on the brown wall now.
That looks so much better. So much better.
What's the date you said there'd be stand-in walls?
February.
But no reference?
No, no idea.
And you don't know how long, how long it's going to take to get them up?
I don't. They're, they're actually thinking a couple of weeks.
When do they actually pour that precast?
They're pouring it now.
And what, is this the one?
They actually, I'm sorry, go ahead. They've actually got, the longest part was getting all of the tubes and all the other things that need to be in the walls lined out with all the, all the specs and stuff, so they're pouring them now, coming February.
So the new, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Rundy.
Was this the precast that we were looking at different images, figuring out what to get?
Yeah, the trees.
Okay, so the trees is what was decided on?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Rundy's not a big fan of the trees.
I hate the trees.
He would like it to just be plain and un-
Happy Halloween?
Boring.
No, let you clarify that!
Boring.
Sure.
There's no arguing about matters of taste. He is a, what I found in this process is he's a minimalist and likes things to be very, very simple, because when he sees something like that, he thinks, "How much money did that cost?"
That's my first question.
See, I listen.
That's right.
The trees are going to look nice, though.
I'm also going to assume that then, that the new architect will take over the facilities feasibility study that we've asked for.
And that has been put on hold.
Sure.
It's, yeah.
All right. Any other questions from the board?
I have just, for old business, the dress code and the evaluation, I know we passed that stuff out last meeting. Is that, are we going to talk about that at like the next board meeting, or?
It's in, I'd have to look at my calendar. When do we typically bring the building management plans forward?
They will start, the principals will start working on them now, usually not until March.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they'll actually, you know, get approval March or April.
We actually have a meeting this Thursday with the discipline subcommittee to kind of look at the PBIS programs and those things, so starting to get the information together for the-
We don't need to talk about that more so that they have a way to guide them when they come up with the plans?
The-
The dress code and stuff?
No, I think it's pretty clear.
Okay.
My conversations with them, they've not been confused.
Okay.
So.
Other questions? Okay. Let's move into new business. First order is the seniority list, which is informational, is enclosure number one, and the only enclosure in your package.
Yep, and you guys get to look at the seniority list, as do all of the employees in the district. They will contact Nancy if something is wrong or seems to be aford, and Nancy will track it down and figure out if it's correct, or if it is in fact going to be changed. So this is the first reading. It'll come back next month for your approval. and we'll be able to update you with any and all changes that possibly or do not occur.
Any questions? Okay. The board has a need to move into closed session?
I can march you to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2 of the Open Meetings Act 5, Almark and Palt Statutes 120 2C, to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its delivery.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Nancy?
Who wants it?
She does.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Dor?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mrs. James?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
And Mr. Rundy?
Yes, motion carries. We'll see you all in a few minutes, I think.